Good evening and buenas tardes a todos. Eli, roll call please.
Trustee McAvoy.
Present.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Trustee Lawson.
Here.
Vice President Marcus.
Here.
President Diaz-Locum.
Present.
Thank you. Again, welcome everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. Bienvenidos a todos. Gracias por acompañarnos esta tarde. If you're here in person and would like to address the board, please fill out a card and hand it to Eliana. If you are joining us virtually, please fill out the Google Doc. Spanish translation is provided. Interpretación al español está disponible. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I was wondering if we could move the bond program consent items up to after the approval of the agenda. So after 4.1, and that way they can hop off if they'd like to do that.
Okay, any other changes? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You may need to do a roll call vote. Yeah.
Yes. Roll call please.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have any oral communication?
We do not.
Thank you. Okay, so bond program consent agenda items, they were moved to under approval of agenda? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Or is it roll call? Okay, sorry. Roll call please.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Okay, and then item six, school and community reports. 6.1, update to the upcoming adoption of middle school history, social science materials.
All right, Ms. Wolf will give an introduction and then I believe there's a presentation if I'm not mistaken.
Yes. Yes, and I'd like to introduce Sarah Cullum, who many of you already know, who is our person of all trades, right? She oversees the history of social studies for sixth or eighth grade. She is our literacy support for sixth to eighth grade. She is our communication with Sequoia High School District and the articulation and many more things. And so she's here tonight to talk to you about the history of social studies adoption that has finally been recommended by our teachers. And so we have a presentation to show. And Sarah is going to be speaking up here at the podium. I'm going to share my screen.
Good evening. So for the middle school history, social science adoption, the committee would like to recommend to the board that we go with the TCI history alive adoption. And this comes after a process where we looked at five of the state adopted materials on their state adoption list and we piloted three of them throughout the pandemic and when we returned in the blended hub learning situation and then finally this year. So our factors for determining this recommendation are based on the student preference. We surveyed students continuously throughout this process, both after they had completed certain types of activities within a program and then at the end of the program to get the overall sense of where they felt they were with this particular material. We found out from students that while adolescents in their recreational use of technology are very happy to have multiple tabs open and work across multiple devices, when it comes to their schoolwork, they like a very streamlined approach with their instructional materials. And they particularly called out TCI's design of the platform. The ease of navigation was important to them. And we got a lot of comments focused on that streamlining. So TCI has a one kind of page central look with a navigation menu on the side. Students felt that was the easiest one to use. And they kept telling us when the technology works as it should, when it's streamlined, we can focus on the actual task and we don't get frustrated with trying to make various components work. So students appreciated the universal access features in TCI and they liked some of the additional enrichment features like the geography challenges and games. They found that being able to adjust the text slightly helped some readers with comprehension. Embedded glossaries, main idea highlighting within text, those were all universal access tools that were appreciated by students and teachers. In terms of the teacher preferences, again, the reliability of the platform, connection, navigation, just the overall design that a publisher took were important. They liked that TCI well had a sort of custom feature in terms of every lesson has a downloadable slide deck. So teachers could manipulate that. It wasn't a static platform. And particularly important to our committee was that the Spanish components for the Spanish immersion program, that there be parity. We found that several publishers only had partial materials available in Spanish. So that was something we very much looked at. And we looked at the responsiveness of the publisher's tech support and the fact that TCI is local, they're just down the freeway in Palo Alto. So we can find them easily if we have issues. That was another important aspect for the teachers. Those were sort of the main focus of our deliberation. Overall, I think from the first time we sat down in June of 2020 and we looked at the materials, having read the framework, the newly published framework and looked at the emphasis the framework was placing on things like inquiry, citizenship, embedded literacy. When we looked at the programs, we're expecting the publishers to probably deliver a little bit more. Instead, we saw what we considered were a lot of copy cuts and pastes from older programs that had just been sort of jazzed up a little bit. We didn't really see any publisher taking on in a really efficient way big designs, something that would equate to like the change with the science programs, the NGSS. So that sort of, we worked through it, but that definitely was an ongoing theme throughout each of the trials and pilots. And so the committee would like to recommend TCI. And they also said, we think we should have ongoing district teacher collaboration to find resources and to help us drive the project-based approach that we would like to see in social studies. Realizing that that's not going to be done easily. That's going to take several years to work on. So really, again, emphasizing resources that promote the citizen connections called for in the framework and keeping the past connected for students with the current events that they're interested in and are pursuing. So those were the main features of the adoption process and the committee did incredible work. Because in the beginning, when everything was online, we were adjusting to distance learning. They also had the added task of using new materials.
Sarah, any questions?
So Sarah, the teacher collaboration, when they talked about that and how to collaborate and then create some type of projects or something, did they indicate the timing? How would that take place?
We really didn't get into details without it was sort of to be continued. The first step would be the onboarding of everyone with the new materials. But they thought that we should, each grade level should start by seeing if the teachers who want to come together to work with some pro- some programs, some project features, starting small, that would particularly emphasize the diversity in our community and speak to the history of our student groups. So they gave a little bit of direction in that sense.
A little similar to what we did in the past where as you recall, they're at grade levels at a time and you would release them or they would come after school and they would be paid a stipend to, you know, go through that process and deliberate and collaborate and so forth.
Yeah, I think they were very much looking for, you know, support from the board, from the district in terms of what resources might be available to help with that process.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I don't have any questions. I wanted to say thank you very much to you and the whole team. And we have the names here in the board packet and I really appreciate it because I know there was a lot going on the last several years. And to add this on to their workload is, is, you know, extraordinary. So just thank you to all of, I don't know if some of them may be on the board meeting tonight, but if not, if you could pass that information on to them, that'd be great from the whole board, I know for sure. We're all shaking our heads. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll agree with that. Thank you. And to everybody that was on the committee. You had answered one of my questions in email. I thought maybe you could share a little bit of that with the other board members. I was asking around because our equity policy talks about curriculum and says that we want to adopt curriculum and instructional materials that accurately reflect the diversity among student groups. Could you share a little bit about like how you answered that in email?
So in middle school, sixth and seventh grade are devoted to world history. So they essentially start with the beginnings of human history and go through into the mid 1700s. And they travel the world in that. So across the programs, across the standards, student study is very much focused on diverse groups. It is no longer sort of just European history that's studied. So they will study in depth all the major continents and the major early civilizations in sixth grade and then the development of the modern empires in seventh grade.
No, I don't have any questions. I was just going to say what Elisa said to thank everyone who worked on this because I know it was not an easy time to be working on this stuff. So appreciate all the extra effort that went into that.
I will post that message on. Thank you. Maria, do you have any questions or comments?
I just wanted to add that I really like having the student input. I think that's really important. So I wanted again to echo my colleagues and saying thank you to everybody. And I'm looking forward to the launch.
Great, thank you. And I just, my question would just be on, you mentioned the project-based approach. Can you just elaborate a little more on that, please?
So I think this feeds into the diversity question. Looking to really highlight certain areas of study and expand on the existing text with some projects for elaboration and enrichment. For example, a key one for the seventh grade would be Mesoamerican culture. Looking at the ancient cultures there in more depth, looking at how they're connected to many of our families' histories and ethnic backgrounds.
Great, that was it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. You do such a wonderful job and you've been doing it for many years now and I really appreciate all your hard work and being when the staff, what we used to call it staff development, and now it's teachers on special assignment, but you've been one of the great leaders for years now. So thank you so much for all your hard work. I mean, we can, we can always call it things if we don't understand. We can get Sarah up here right away. So thank you again. She's great.
Okay, moving along is 6.2 instructional support and primary teachers.
All right, Liz, go ahead.
So as was just mentioned, really the reason that there are things moving forward right now in curriculum, in professional development, in instructional strategies and in teacher support is due to our staff development team. Some of the rest of us are pulled off on writing plans and doing all sorts of crazy stuff, but without our staff development team and the high quality and the experience and the dedication and the never say no attitude that they have to everything that they've been asked to do has made the difference in what's been happening in Redwood City. And so I want to echo the thanks to Sarah and introduce three more of our staff development team who are going to be talking about a professional development model that they have been working on this year, even in the midst of a pandemic. And so I'm going to introduce Mariela Talavera, Laura Pulido and Bear Hafa, who are going to be talking about how they've taken some training that they've received over the years and made it a Redwood City model for integrated thematic units that brings together all of the different initiatives that our district has been working on so that teachers don't see all of these different things as disparate. Oh, now we have to do this and now we have to do this. They see it as one professional development model in terms of the thematic units. But what they're also doing is they're sitting down with them side by side and helping them in their training. They do the modeling, they do coaching, they do planning, and then now they're looking at evidence of student learning and doing kind of a lesson study around the the lessons that are being designed in the thematic units. And we're super proud of this model and super proud that they've been able to do this, given that there's no subs and they're being called to do testing and do all the things that are going on right now that they're persevering with this this goal of providing high-quality professional development to our staff. And so they're going to talk about it tonight and it's going to be a model that we continue to try to expand next year as well. So I'm going to invite our friends to come forward here online and I will go ahead and share my screen and you guys just say next slide when you're ready for me to do that.
Okay, well, I was supposed to do a little introduction of Laura and Marielle and myself, but Liz just did that for us. So without further ado, we'll go ahead and go to the next slide and Laura will take over.
Actually, I think it's going to be me. Yeah. That's okay. Hola, buenas noches a todos. Good evening, everyone. So to give you a bit of background around what integrated units are, how better than here it from a classroom teacher herself? So here we're going to watch a short video of Mary Jane Vallejo describing this approach in her classroom. So Liz, can you please, oh, here we go.
Sound. Maybe we should put subtitles.
Oh, it doesn't have subtitles because to do that, we have to upload it to YouTube.
Got it. Sorry.
If Liz, if you if you can mute.
Can we're we're just wondering, is the audience able to hear the video?
I don't think so.
Okay.
We're not on our end.
Yeah. Are you able to hear it at the boardroom?
Okay.
Oh, that's good. Okay.
We also have different strategies in our classroom. So we have some drawn labels that we have. This one is a little bit in the middle of some of the strategies because sometimes we, you know, we obviously reference them down. But you know, we process and all of our drawn labels and throughout the unit, we go with our language function. So this one is cause and effect. So then we'll go to sentence frames and go with it and our story also. That's in the middle of a strategy tube where we go back and the kids retell the stories and and also we have, you know, the real story of the three pigs. And there's a lot of cause and effect. Where then from this, students can use these different examples. Cause and effect to bring them back to, to a writing piece. For example, for one of our lessons, we have a book about sequencing for an aguaeta from this time and then they also then incorporated some check and adding pictures. And they, you know, they wrote it. With these integrated units, it's really important that kids get the opportunity to come up from the apartment. They work in teams. They know that they have to collaborate and send me two different activities throughout the unit where they have this opportunity to and, you know, have a voice and they feel empowered with using all of the knowledge that they've learned throughout the unit, you know, the academic language that they've learned. And so therefore this helps them, these units, I feel that helps them to be successful as they learn and they are engaged throughout the unit. Thank you.
Can we get a copy of that? Yeah, we can share the video with you so you can watch it later. But you know, for those who were able to hear the sounds, you can see how this teacher is truly invested in the process. And later on, I'm not sure, but we will see some short clips of some of our students thriving, but I don't know if we're going to have a problem with the sound, how we're going to do that. But yeah, we have prepared a few videos for you tonight.
On great. So starting this year, we introduced a new training structure that allows TK to three teachers to receive PD in short increments. So for about two hours and we did this, of course, to minimize the amount of time that teachers were out of the classroom, given that, you know, we want, we wanted to return from the pandemic and be with our students as much as possible. In these small sessions, teachers learn new strategies in order to deliver content and of course to engage our students. They were able to reflect on their practice and they observed model lessons and in some cases even had the opportunity to co-teach. This year, we also updated our integrated units to better address our district's vision around equity and student empowerment as well as the work that we're doing with NUA. We worked with 45 teachers across seven sites during our three cycles, as you can see here. And these teachers are teachers who had never been trained before in the use of integrated units or whose training was interrupted due to COVID. In the spring, we also invited these teachers along with their already trained colleagues to participate in half-day planning sessions. And this allowed us to share this new direction and all the new resources with them as well. We also worked with our TK teachers to begin looking at the alignment with pre-K for next year. So we had sessions every trimester. And we feel really good. We're closing the year on a high note. We feel that we were able to meet with teachers on a regular basis. We feel that we had an impact on the quality of instruction, improvement and student engagement. And we foster collaboration among teachers. Through our work, we were able to connect and integrate different initiatives into our instruction where teachers recognize the value of each of those initiatives and the role that they all play together in order to provide students with a well-rounded learning experience. And especially given our context for our multilingual learners. Next slide, please.
Okay, so here you see an aligned social studies and science units document. This has TK through third grade. And this is was created for admins so that they could have a one size or one picture, you know, see it all together. But it has also helped us and teachers, we have these hanging in many of our, our school sites and the work rooms. And so for quick reference, so the teachers can see where they are now, where they're going next. And, and it helps them prepare. And next slide, please. Okay, so we're going to watch a really short video. I hope you guys can hear the sound on it because it's super sweet. It's two first graders who are sharing what they've learned about sound and light from the first grade sound and light unit. And this was done as a product of the amazing work of a new teacher we have at Roosevelt, Ms. Kayla Camale. So here's, oh, actually you have to play the video, Liz, right? Sorry. Okay, well, even if you could, if there was an echo, you get the idea. And actually, we should show that to the kids because it's a perfect showing of sound and what sound can do, right? Also are the drawn labels for one of the, one of the drawn labels for the sound unit and some student writing, which is their student writing after, at the end of each unit. Next slide, please. And this is just a few samples of work that we have at our schools. You'll see that we have from left to right, we have a picture of a focus wall where much of the unit information is, however, unit information is usually found throughout the classroom, but we usually have a focus wall that has, you know, the essential questions and the topics and visuals, et cetera. Next to that is the drawn label. And following that is a research center. Down below is a new strategy that our teachers have been using called the the dictado, right, or el dictado? How did I say it? And then following that is a cooperative strip paragraph and then the homeschool connections, which are a part of every unit. Still me. These photos are evidence of how the students learn about wonderful concepts in the content areas such in units such as processes, processes that shape the earth, biodiversity and plant reproduction, weather, indigenous peoples and patterns in the sky. Next slide, please.
And so here we have some images of our immersion schools at Orion and Adelante Selby. And we see how teachers make cross-linguistic connections between English and Spanish in our Spanish immersion program. And it is also clear how integrated units allow for a print-rich environment where both language and content come alive. So we have another video. It's really cute. It's a kindergarten student giving an oral presentation at the end of their community unit. And I think she's going to talk about what she wants to be when she grows up. Let's see, you know, if we can hear it. It's really cute. And it's in Mandarin, by the way.
Okay. Let's see, is this my slide? Yes, sorry. In this slide, you'll see that there are some pre-K and TK students using traumatic play areas and discussing what they've learned using academic language as they talk about the content they've learned about. Next slide.
And this year, we also had the pleasure of working with two of our K2 sped teachers. They really have seen the power of integrated units and the strategies. They found that with some modifications, they are able to use them in their instructional context and have excellent results. So this particular strategy is called a sentence patterning chart. And with several sessions and several scaffolding through a series of lessons, students were able to write an independent sentence at the end of the week. The students were felt extremely successful and so did the teacher. Next slide, please. And as we mentioned earlier, we began embedding all our new learnings from NUA and other initiatives into our units. And here we see how circle maps from NUA and graphic organizers with some of the integrated unit work we've been doing for some time really complement each other, right? They help students define timelines here using a circle map. And then they apply those timelines to the academic content as well as to their own lives. Next slide. Here we see another NUA strategy called view and capture, where students watched an informational video and used a graphic organizer to jot down the main points. Students then reprocess that information whole group onto a categorical matrix, which is an integrated unit strategy. Where language supports were embedded such as those sentence frames. They then took it into writing. Next slide. We have also been integrating many of the engaging reading strategies from NUA like key vocabulary prediction. We incorporate that with some of our purposeful read alouds as well as some of our benchmark text. And we also use thinking maps along with our chance and language function walls, as we can see here.
Next slide. And here we had another video. Anyways, but with so, the video shows how two second grade students at adelante Selby are using an NUA strategy that's called who, what, when, where, and how. It's a rap. And they are using that strategy for retaining for understanding after they learned about producers and consumers. So they did a drawn label, which is that image that you see on the left. And then they, to retain for understanding, engage in this rap, in this strategy. So we can see, I mean, we're not able to see the video now, but we can say that the two approaches fit together very well to support student learning and engagement. Next slide. Okay. And so each of the six integrated units per grade level has a suggested thematic planner. So here is a sample of one of the thematic planners where teachers can find all the useful information they need to, to help guide their planning. As you can see, there's live links. So resources are easily found. And also you can see that in the middle section, we find some of the, the new learnings around culturally responsive strategy. So this year we added that resource there, the culturally responsive strategies to integrate. Next slide.
And a next step that we started trying out this spring is this cycle lesson design. We selected a team of teachers at two of our sites and teachers collaborated to create a lesson that reflects all our new learnings, such as the faces of learning, where we see here priming, processing and retaining for understanding. They incorporate reflection and formative assessments. Teachers then taught the lessons in their classrooms. And then we got back together where they had a chance to reflect on their experience teaching the lesson. And also of course on student engagement. We also had the opportunity to analyze some of their student work samples. So you can see some of those here. Next slide, please. And here's a quote from one teacher. We received very positive feedback. We'll give you a moment to read that on your own. So we hope that next year we are able to create a system where these lesson design cycles occur regularly and during teacher's workday. One layer that we'll be adding though is peer observation where after creating the lesson, they'll be able to observe each other, teach the lesson so that they can come back and reflect on each other's learnings and each other's ways of approaching the, the instruction. We hope to include the lesson design cycles in our already planned cycle PDs. So that we can truly become professional learning communities that way. Next slide, please.
And one of the many resources we created this year is this ebook that compiles all of our integrated unit strategies. It has videos, photos and highlights for each of the strategies, as you can see here. We also included ELD and LPAC connections as well as NUA and SEL strategies throughout the book. So you can see all those listed on these two pages here. Next slide. And also last year, we were very fortunate to have worked with a professional and award-winning podcast producer, Dennis Maxwell. And he helped us create these podcast-based mini-units that celebrate diverse voices and diverse cultures here from, from the Bay Area. And so we used audio clips as text and NUA strategies throughout the units to engage our students. And Dennis also worked with a group of newcomer kids. You know, our newcomer kids in storytelling class after school. Since the last mini-unit, it's the one here called, this is my story. So this, this mini-unit highlights some of their migration stories, which are very, very powerful to hear, to learn about. Next slide.
Can I ask real quick on that last slide? Would, would we have access to hear some of those migration stories?
Oh, yeah.
And so if we get this presentation, we'll be able to link to it? Or, or you can just send it to us separately?
Yes.
That would be great. Thank you very much. I would love to.
There's also links them in the teacher's newsletter. So if you go back to those and find them there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. So we have those. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So finally, so next year for TK, we're going to be having five classrooms. And I will be working very closely with all five classrooms. We're going to have one Mandarin version, one Spanish version, one bilingual and two English only at the moment. That's what we know. And we will be developing our TK units even further. And we will be looking at the alignment between pre-K, TK and K as there's similar content. We're going to make sure that content is not duplicated but enhanced. And before I go on to Laura, I just want to give a shout out to my colleagues Laura and Mariela for the enormous amount of work that they do. I can't even begin to tell you how hard they work on all of the planners and how important they are to the work the teachers do. They really make it easier. Nothing's easy in teaching, but they make it easier for teachers to do this hard work and important work. So kudos to my team.
Thank you, Anne. And, and the same is true about you.
Absolutely.
Truly are a team and the teachers appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
So as Anne has said, we have been extremely busy this year and our plans for next year then are to continue with the pre-K and TK alignment, as Anne said. We also hope to work with the new teachers or new hires at the beginning of the year to have sort of a short onboard meeting so that when they meet their new team, they have a little bit of background. And then of course, we're going to continue with our PD cycles where we're going to include this lesson design piece into it. We also hope that we can incorporate half-day planning sessions throughout the year. This year we did it in the spring and we believe that teachers need opportunities throughout the year in order to be better prepared. And in order for that collaboration and that reflection piece to take place. So a calendar hopefully will be created soon. We thank you so much for your attention tonight. Muchas gracias. Yeah. Probably have some questions.
Are there any questions or comments?
Well, I want to say thank you very much. This was a wonderful presentation and I look forward to getting a copy so we can watch the videos. Thank you for putting those in there. We're just, you know, we're trying to do this hybrid approach with our board meetings. And we're still working out some of the kinks, but it does allow everybody to participate. So anyway, thank you for that. And you know, I know that, you know, I've been out to some of the school sites over the years and also the last couple of months, seeing the SEAL and the NUA and some of the other strategies that we're using. But it was really nice to get a kind of a comprehensive overview from you because of course, when we go into classrooms, we sort of see bits and pieces of it, not you know, not as comprehensive that you just shared with us tonight. So thanks to the three of you for all of your work. I know how hard the whole staff development team works. And I really appreciate all the information. And I, I'm so grateful to so many of our teachers and our administrators and others at school sites that are willing to try some of these new things. And I think what's happening, of course, what we're seeing is success builds success. So they begin to see how their students respond and the growth that they're seeing in their students in so many ways, whether it be social, emotional or academic or what have you. So you know, really thank you for sticking with it. I know that many of you have been here for years and plugging away and you know, none of this is easy. It doesn't happen overnight. There's no magic bullet with any of this. And so really appreciate just everything that you're doing. So thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. And, and Marielle and Laura, thank you so much for presenting tonight and showing us. We can't wait to see the videos. I agree. But the, the slides and the information here, these strategies are really exciting to see them getting implemented and brought in. The ability, you know, the, the engagement that, that brings to the students, but also the sort of just incorporating the differentiation right into all of the, the, throughout the day lesson. You know, it's, it's great. I think that it's, these are wonderful things that we're bringing to our students. It's what, great to see how many teachers were able to take advantage of it too. Forty-five is a great number. This is just me not being totally aware, but like, are we, we're doing the same thing for upper grades too, right? Or are there, is there?
Right? Because they're more subject based. Our team definitely is working with them in terms of, of the strategies, but it's not really an integrated as much approach as it is.
Got it. Got it. Okay. So but that's the, that's, so these are the integrating ones. Okay, cool. That's, that's outstanding. I look forward to hearing, you know, all our staff development plans for the next year as we work through the LCAP and get ready for the budget. And then I guess, yeah, I don't, I don't know if, I had asked on Monday, on Tuesday, if we could sort of just get a reminder of like, what are all the?
We do have it and they are multi-funded and we have, this has a list right there. She has it. Yeah, she made the mistake.
I made the mistake of asking the staff development team to write down, just jot down a few notes of things you're working on. So I like, I have like 20 pages of things because they're so busy. But they are, there's 11 of them at the current time and we have added a few more for next year in terms of the educator effectiveness grant. We haven't hired them yet. But there's 11 currently who will be continuing next year who are multi-funded either out of title funding, summer LCAP funding, summer grant funded. Right? And I have that breakdown by, by person. But they each have an area of expertise, but I've asked them to to multitask and they have added more to their repertoire. And so because we didn't have people who were involved as much in literacy. And so now we've got a couple of people who are doing that. We had people who needed to support the SEL work. And so now they've taken on that, right? And so they are, Sarah has been adding literacy to her history, social studies, right? So each of them have more than one thing that they do and they're expert at all of them. They're an amazing group. So the level of detail that you want, I can send you more information in terms of.
No, that's perfect. And just even getting the reminder of the numbers that are there is something that I wish I could walk around with it in my head all the time, but I do forget it. So I, that's, that was the reminder I wanted to get. Thanks.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you to Anne and Laura and Mariela. You guys are a strong team and I really appreciate everything that you've done and really looking forward to getting the presentation. So I can see the videos too. And the, the podcast as well. So that's great. Thank you very much.
And I would also echo my thanks to all of you. And I would also like to thank John Baker because he has supported the staff development idea from the very first. I always believe that it's great to have that extra help because teachers just have so much to do. And you guys have done a tremendous job. I really liked the podcasts when I listened to them. I think they sent us those links before and they were really, really good. So you guys are doing great, great work. I also really like the fact that you are doing this onboarding for new teachers because that's always my question. We've trained all these people, but what about the new ones? So again, thank you very much. You guys are rock stars, as Dennis would say. So keep doing what you're doing and thank you for all you've done.
And for me, same. I appreciate your willingness to work as a team. And of course, you're very appreciative of each other. And of course, like one of the teachers, the, the one screen that we read, she mentioned collaboration, sharing and thoughtful to create lesson plans. So of course, that's what you guys are doing, working with, we're teachers. So again, thank you very much for all the work that you guys do for Revit City.
And I'd like to add, you know, when Mariela and Laura came and showed us the video, they showed us, they put together the power, a PowerPoint for Liz and myself to just to give us a flavor of what they've been doing this year. I did not expect this type of work to be taking place, you know, during this pandemic. So they went out there and had the initiative to go forward. And staff development is a really important thing because, you know, in any normal business, you're out and you go out for your staff development. I, you know, as my person at my other half at home gets that a lot and takes his staff out a lot to do things. We don't get that opportunity. So we have these great people that work for us in staff development to do this. And I'm impressed with the collaboration, the reflection. And I'm really interested in the peer observation once you start doing that next year. Let me know. I, I'd like to go, but I'd like to like be in the background because they said superintendent coming in, they're going to go freak out. So and it's not to do that. I just want to, I just want to observe. I'm not going to critique or anything. I just want to observe it because that is the biggest thing that superintendents we talk about is exactly what they're doing right now. The collaboration of and, and creating lessons together. And then they'll, one of them will present a lesson, the other one will watch the lesson and they'll critique it with one another. And that's exactly what you're doing and what we're hoping as educational leaders that that takes place. And you've, and you've started it, which is fantastic. I was just, when Liz says we're going to meet with Laura and Mariela, and I know Anne, you were not with us at the time, but kudos to you too, for the many years that you've been working in this arena. But I was just totally thrown back because this is what you want to see. This is the the epitome of what teaching should look like. Instead of being in your classroom all by yourself, preparing and you have, you know, different levels. Instead of being in your classroom all by yourself, preparing, and you have, you know, different levels, levels of students. This is what it should be, and I thank you so much for bringing this to the forefront. I do read, you know, every week that Liz puts together, I used to call it a newsletter, but I don't know what I call it anymore. And I, and I go in there and I, I go in there and I watch the podcasts, and I watch the, and I watch the videos. It's amazing. I have not shared it with my colleagues, because I think they're going to want to steal some of it. But so I'm not doing that. I'm just saying, you know, if you want to see, and it'll probably be, of course, next year, if we're more so, which thumbs up, we will be in the classrooms more so. Have them come in and really look at this and look at what you're doing. This is great. This is what it should be. This is exactly what, my hat's off to each and every one of you. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. You know, Sarah, Sarah's been with me back when I was in Liz's position and and working with staff development, so was Ann. I think Mariela was. I'm not sure Laura was there yet. But thank you, Laura, for for joining us and and coming out of the classroom and all that. I really appreciate it. It's great. It's really good. You should be proud. I'm very proud. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine, consent items. Can I get?
You're welcome to stay on for the rest of the board meeting, but you can jump off if you'd like. But thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve the consent item?
I'll move to approve the consent items.
We'll call, please. Tracy McAvoy.
Aye.
Tracy Wells.
Aye.
Tracy Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marquez.
Aye.
President Deosloka.
Aye.
Action items, 10.1, recommendation regarding adoption of Resolution 36, authorizing electronic meetings of the Board of Trustees during a state of emergency pursuant to government code section 54953.
You all know what this is.
I'll make a motion, and it's so great to see you, Maria, tonight. Welcome back. Second.
Great. It's great to see that. Thanks.
Rock Coffee.
Tracy McAvoy.
Aye.
Tracy Wells.
Aye.
Tracy Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marquez.
Aye.
President Deosloka.
Aye.
11.1, report from from board members and superintendent.
I'll go first. I just have, let's see, we had a workforce opposing meeting, and we'll be having a closed session coming up for that. And then I went to the retirement celebration, and that was really, really nice. It was great to see everyone there, and everyone, Eliana and everyone who put it together did a really great job. So I loved that, and that's all I have.
Yeah, I I agree. It was a great event. It was really nice to spend time with, you know, the staff that were retiring from custodians, bus drivers, instructional assistants, administrators, and teachers. Really, it was nice to meet everyone. Also, there was a music festival at MIT on Friday. I had to leave early, but I did get to hear the cross-middle-school performances. That was, that was really, that was awesome to hear, because they didn't get to do a concert for their family. So it'll be recorded, and hopefully we'll get a copy of that. And then yesterday, we had the LCAP meeting, reviewed all three goals. I guess we gave the final, you know, last little bit of advice as a committee, and the next step will be that it'll be coming to the board in the last two meetings in June.
So let's see, I did some of the same things as Janet and Mike. I did want to just call out the retirement party and say thank you very much to Ellie, Evelyn, and Jorge. I think the three of you probably did most of the work. If there's anyone else, thank you as well. It was such a nice event, and I know the retirees really appreciated it. And I appreciated it, because it's so nice just to to really thank them all. So thanks for that. And then I also was able to go to the musical event. I came in in the second half. And it was just amazing. I mean, the students were so good, and they were coming from all different schools. Many of them had not played together before. It was pretty clear how good the music, the music teachers were to get that to happen and how hard the students had worked all year. So that was great, and I look forward to seeing the videos. And it sounds like they're going to put together videos, both of the mariachi day, as well as that. And so we'll be seeing those at a later date. And then I know that Liz, after we left, you thanked Carol McNamara, who's leaving us after, what, 37 years of teaching music in our district? And so I just want to publicly thank her at this board meeting for all of her years of musical service, just truly, truly amazing. And she was busy prepping for the musical event, so she didn't come to the retirement party, but she deserves a lot of thanks. And I know you, you had gotten her flowers and all sorts of stuff. So thanks for that. Let's see, I did meet with one of the parents on the food committee. I think they're probably meeting with board members, just making the rounds and chatting about things that they're learning from other school districts. And so it was really just kind of a listen. And I think they're going to try to put together a panel that they would invite us to, probably in August or September, when we're back at school. And the panel would be some of the nutritional directors from other school sites that are doing different things. So just a learning opportunity. And then John and Maria and I, we went to the two by two by two. Maria, why don't I let you talk about that, if you'd like to, about what we talked about?
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. So basically, the city called the meeting, although we do have them regularly. And in part, it was to let us know that we do have some youth, some middle school and high schoolers who are riding bicycles around town. And of course, we want them to be riding bicycles and and, you know, being outside and all of that. But some of them are beginning to get in trouble, and so we brainstormed a little bit on how we can proactively help the students, help with education, maybe contact parents where needed, that sort of thing. So there'll be some follow-up over the next couple of weeks in the summer. And there's a small team, and we've got a couple of our staff that are on that team helping out. And I think there was a lot of conversation that for those that are legally, you know, doing the good things on a bicycle, we want to encourage that. And then for those that are going outside the bounds, they also need some, some help as well. So that'll be coming forward. And Maria, feel free to add to that as well. And I'm done.
No, I think you've covered it quite well, and that's all I had.
And as for me, same thing. The only thing that I attended was a retiree event, which again was great. Thank you.
All mine were mentioned.
Okay, so item 12.1, information on the Samatow County Investment Fund.
Are there any questions?
Thank you. Any correspondence?
I did receive some emails from parents having to do with what they want to have at their school sites, you know, where it'd be TK or some other program. And then also an email from a KIPP parent that is not happy with the after-school placement there.
Any other business possible for other business suggestion items?
So I just wanted to remind you that a couple of things. On Friday is the ribbon cutting for Taft. You all have that, right? Okay, just wanted to correct. That's what my, right, that's what my calendar says. It's 10. Yeah. And then for the June 15th meeting, there'll be a closed session at 5 o'clock. And then the regular meeting will start at 6:00. And that regular meeting, why it's starting at 6:00 is we not only will have information regarding the bond from TBWH, and also Blake will be coming to talk. And then after that, at 7:00, we'll go into a regular session, which the main item for that is the North Star Moving Forward Report. So I wanted to make sure you had that on. That's the 15th, June 15th.
A meeting on, do we have one on Monday, the the Monday?
Right, that's June 30th, that's June 13th for us.
Okay.
That's with me.
Yes, and what, what time is that?
9:00.
Okay. And you'll let us know where that is. Are you thinking, yeah, 9:00?
Yeah, 9:00 to about 12:00, and then.
Okay, great. And then can you remind me, when do we put together the calendar for next school year, just so we can start to get those dates on our?
For the new school year coming, the 2223? We will try and work on those before.
So I actually, Evelyn and I will have a meeting next week, because we'll start working on those calendars, on school assignments and committee assignments. So we will try to wrap all that up. And then we'll have a meeting with Superintendent Baker to get his okay. And hopefully, I don't know whether you want this information to be placed on the June 29th board meeting, or you would rather just wait that we present this meeting, or Evelyn present this information to you in the first board meeting in August.
The August 10th.
Yeah, I'd rather, at least the calendar dates, I don't think we need all the assignments, I suppose. Well, I I don't know. I'd like the calendar dates, just because things will start booking up over the summer. So we want to make sure if there's any, you know, we know the regular Wednesdays, but if there's anything extra or if things have moved, that would be helpful.
I think.
Don't you think? I mean, it would be for me, so.
I think for the board meetings, we could do that. And I think for the other ones, I think it's common practice that it comes first as a discussion item in August, and then it comes back as a consent item for further approval.
And and even if they're draft at the 29th, and then we, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but it's helpful. It'd be helpful for me just to plan.
I was going to say the same thing, even if it's just a draft, just so we can mark it down, would be really helpful.
Okay, so I'll work with Evelyn. She's going to be taking over the last two board meetings. So we will make sure to agendize it, so it comes to you as a discussion item. So you can discuss it, and then for further approval in August.
Right. Yeah. So 15.1 changes to the board agenda. Are there any? Okay. So can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved. I feel like it's always me.
Second.
Rock Coffee.
Tracy McAvoy.
Aye.
Tracy Wells.
Aye.
Tracy Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marquez.
Aye.
President Deosloka.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, Maria.
Good night, Maria.
Good night. Thanks, guys.
Yeah, nice to see you.
See you, too.